I'd like to call the Tuesday, January the 10th, 2023 Board of Education meeting about Alexander County Schools to order. I'd like to recognize a few of our Whittenbury Elementary School students that's going to come lead us in the pledge. I believe we've got Liza Robinette and Colton Grable. Is there, is there some more? Please make me aware those are the two on our list. Y'all will come on up, lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Members, you have your agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Board Member Bowman, second by Board Member Dagenhart. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor of approval of agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda carries. I'm going to recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner at this time for our honors and recognitions portion.
Thank you Chairman Robinson, Vice Chairman Agüez, board members, and community. This is my favorite part of our board meeting every single month, and I'm honored to make some recognitions tonight of some very deserving individuals. Dr. Curry, if you don't care to come up and help me, I'm going to go ahead and start reading. Tonight, we would like to honor our Board of Education members during this month of January, School Board Appreciation Month. Members help establish district policy, set spending priorities, and recognize staff and student accomplishments. Being a school board member is a big responsibility, not to be taken lightly. The members go through legal training to learn more about educational law affecting our staff and students. Board members are caretakers in our district. They work to build consensus on issues affecting children's lives. The dedication of Alexander County Schools Board members to students and the community makes our schools places where all children can discover their interests and prepare for their future. As we say here, children are first. Specifically, tonight, we are going to thank our board members, and I hate that Bridgette Ryan could not be here, she's out of town, but we do have six of our seven here, and I'm going to start with Vice Chair Robert Agüez from District One, if you will come forward. Mr. Agüez represents the Whittenburg and Bethlehem districts and was seated to this position in December. Thank you. We're going to get a picture. Actually, yeah, I started to say, probably, we're going to need a little bit more rhythm to these if you got it. Next, we're going to recognize Board Member Scott Bowman. He is also a representative in District One. Mr. Bowman has been serving on the Board of Education since 2012. Congratulations. Next, we have Joshua Dagenhart. He's a newcomer to the board. He represents District Two, the Taylorsville District. A round of applause. Next, Anthony McLean. He was sworn into his seat in December, and he represents District Four, which includes the Sharps, Millers, Sugarloaf, and Waltney communities. Congratulations. Matthew Reese also joined us in December. He represents District Two, Taylorsville. And even though Bridgette Ryan is not here, we will recognize her tonight. She has been a part of the school board since 2008 and represents District Four, again, that's Sharps, Millers, Sugarloaf, and the Waltney communities. Give her a round of applause. And finally, our Chair of the Board, Rami Robinson. He has been on the board since 2020 and represents District Three, that is the Ellendale and Little River communities. We certainly thank all of you for your service, and we look forward to working with you so that we continue to improve this school system from 2023 and beyond. Again, many thanks. Board members, before you move, I wanted to let you know that the card that you have, there's a gift inside on behalf of the school system, and then you will see your name on a lot of different things up here. These are all gifts from schools, from students, from staff, from central office staff. So tonight, before you leave, please make sure that you get a box or something. Deborah will help us so that you can take all of your things, and I will tell you that just take some time this week to read the notes that the children wrote, because some of them are funny. I think our Board Chair was referenced as Mr. Ramen, and we know that he's not a noodle. But some of them are funny, but they're all heartfelt, so enjoy those, okay?
I'd like to go ahead and thank, I've had several messages from schools and stuff, and it's, it's, it's a privilege to serve our kids in our county. It's not something I take lightly, and, you know, I don't like being recognized, I will be honest with you. I, I, I serve to serve the kids, not to be recognized. And I'm appreciative of it, and I, every year that we get those cards, it is amazing to read them, and our, our investment in these kids' education is the best thing we can do, and that's what we try to do when we make our decisions and we serve. All right, we have reached the public comment portion. If we had any visitors that choose to leave, it's a good time to slip out. We welcome them to stay. We do have public comment. We have one individual signed up, Andrew Latchford. His topic is parental involvement, excuse me, parent involvement, and I'm going to go ahead at this time and read our public comment procedures. First of all, each person signed up to speak will have three minutes to make his or her remarks. Each person signed up to speak will only be entitled to the time allotted to them, and the time may not be relinquished to another speaker. Number two, only one spokesperson will be allowed to speak for a group of individuals wishing to address the board on the same issue. Number three, speakers will be acknowledged by the Board Chairman in order in which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the board from the front of the room and begin their remarks by stating their names. Comments that are deemed obscene, profane, or personal attacks on a board member or school employee will be called for the ending of a particular speaker's time as determined by the Board Chairperson. Persistence in such remarks by an individual shall terminate that person's privilege to address the board. Number four, the public comment to the board period is not intended to require the board to answer impromptu questions. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and will not, not one individual member of the board. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Number five, speakers will refrain from discussion of any of the following items, items that which are deemed closed session matters, including but not limited to attorney-client privilege, anticipated or pending litigation, property acquisition or liquidation, or complaints about specific employees and students in open session. This is in accordance with General Statute 115(c)(321) in the Open Meetings Law, which protects students and employees' records. Number six, speakers will be courteous in their language and their presentations. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Latchford at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the board, ladies and gentlemen in attendance, my name is Andrew Latchford, live in Bethlehem, and I'm speaking tonight on parent involvement. One of the things that I recognized during the recent election, election cycle, the Taylorsville Times asked school board candidates to comment on their experience and vision for Alexander County Schools. There were 11 responses, and nine of those, in one manner or another, stated they wanted to see parents be welcomed in the schools, parent rights recognized, parent role increased, parent trust grown, parent voices be heard, and parent involvement prioritized. Of the nine that made those assertions, four currently hold membership on this board. While many of these initiatives take time and planning to implement within the school setting, I'd like to ask the board to consider the way in which some things might move in a more immediate sense. On the topic of parent involvement, last month, many parents were present for awards that were given out to their children for Christmas card art and other endeavors. How do you feel those parents would have taken their presents if they arrived for the special audience with the board, only to be told that the first child who arrived for that particular award would be the one able to come up and receive it? Seems very dishonest and generous, wouldn't it? And yet, as we talk about the manner in which speakers may come to the board and give them their own opinion on policy and such, your policy says that groups of individuals are limited to speaking on one topic. I think that needs definition as you read that out, because it would seem that if multiple people wish to speak on the same topic, they would be disallowed. But I think that individual parents would like that opportunity to speak, just like they like the opportunity for each of their children to get an award. I say this, not because the policy isn't effective. I understand the rationale and the justification for the policy, the way that it's written. The board can't efficiently sit there and listen to multiple people ramble on about one topic or another, or maybe even read off the same prompt as a means of disruption of board activity, okay? And certainly, personal attacks or other things that are illegal to discuss in public should not be allowed. However, if there's a concern that personally impacts multiple parents, is it not seemingly within their right to have their concerns heard? I'm sure administration would like to say that most concerns can be addressed at the building level and worked up through the process that was outlined a few months ago, but I ask the board to consider this. If a family has an issue and they go to the teacher, who is assigned to the class by the principal, and if the principal is now supervised by the central office staff, does the parent really have much chance that the concern, number one, come to the board in timely fashion, or two, that the parent might just get disillusioned and not come to the board at all? Please consider giving them the opportunity to speak to you on the items if they have that desire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latchford.
Thank you.
Members of the board, you have your consent agenda in your packet. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Board Member Reese, second by Board Member McLean. Do we have any discussion? If there's no discussion on the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. I'd like to recognize Ms. Melinda Glenn, Principal of Whittenburg Elementary School and Virtual Academy, at this time for her update.
Hello, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. You get to hear from me a lot, so since I'm speaking about two different schools. I wanted to start and just say thank you for the opportunity to lead Whittenburg Elementary School. I was at Whittenburg for several years as their instructional coach, and when this opportunity was presented, I really just kind of felt like I was coming home, and that has been the welcome that I've had at Whittenburg from the community, from the students, from the staff, and I just really appreciate this opportunity. So, this is the Whittenburg version for today. I'm going to spend a whole lot of time here, you can see this, that just gives the general overview of Whittenburg as far as how many students we have. We have lost a few minutes, a few over Christmas, so we're about 270 right now, but that will change as we go on. Our school staffing, I, I want to again say thank you, because this year, we have more staff working with our students as far as interventionists and teacher assistants than we've had in all the years that I have been a part of Whittenburg, and that makes such a difference for our students. So we do have 15 classroom teachers. We just gained one at Christmas as well, so the responsiveness of our central office to our needs, when we were sitting with 22 students in a kindergarten class, being able to add a teacher over Christmas break was phenomenal. It's made a huge difference in what our students are learning in those classes, which will affect us all the way up. We have three and a half EC teachers, and this is where you see a big jump from previous years. We have seven and a half teacher assistants, a full-time substitute, six bus drivers, which is phenomenal, because we don't often have that, one custodian, and we're looking for a halftime custodian, and then three people working in our cafeteria. So just having the sheer numbers of people to work with our students is crucial to success of any school, so I appreciate that. I know that's going to get harder over the next few years, but we appreciate what we have now. As a school, since, since I started, we've really been talking about three Ps, being positive, having a presence, and perseverance, because I feel like if we have positivity, positivity, we are present in our day-to-day walk with students, and we persevere, then we can do anything. And these two pictures may not seem like they fit those words, but they really do. You're seeing Jill Bell, who is actually one of our teacher assistants in our special needs EC class, and she is actually cleaning the floors, which is not her job, but our bus, our janitor was out, we only have one, and he was out for several days doing bus training, which meant that our trash wasn't being taken out by someone regularly. Our floors were not cleaned, and without being asked, she stepped up, and I just happened to see her in the hall pushing that. When you have people who are that present in their day-to-day walk and that positive, because she did that with a smile, we couldn't ask for anything any better. And then the picture at the bottom, our students in our second grade, who are on two separate basketball teams and had just finished a game playing each other, and according to the parents who were there, like it was super positive. Now, they had a lot of perseverance in that game. Both teams wanted to win, but at the end of it, they were still best friends, they loved each other, and wanted to take this picture. That's what we want to see at Whittenburg, people who are willing to work together, to do their best, and still maintain that presence of being good people and friendly and showing a lot of love. So we do have school-wide goals that I just thought I would share with you. These were set at the beginning of the year. The first goal is an academic goal, and we want to increase overall proficiency by 5% as a school in math, reading, and science, making a special effort this year with our exceptional children, who will make a 4% growth in reading and math. We also are concerned about parent engagement and community involvement, and we want to see an increase of that of 10% participation from the first semester to the second semester. And if you look on the next page, you'll see some pictures of our student, our parent involvement that happened in December, right as I was coming on board. We had our Title I Reading Night, parents came in and were able to be in their students' classroom, seeing the changes that we've made in our reading instruction based on the science of reading, and working with their students on different activities similar to what the students would be doing during the school day. And then we had pop in and meet the principal since we'd had a change there, so everybody had popcorn, and we had popcorn all over the school, it was great. And then our last goal is, really has to do with student discipline, and it really goes back to student relationships. We want to improve student relationships with each other, with staff, so that the numbers of official office referrals that we have will go down from last year. They chose from 84 to 80 office referrals, and if you scroll down, you'll see just some of the culture-building activities that we had over the holidays that do help to build those relationships between staff and students. So lots of fun had by all. We had the Grinch come, we had an elf who decorated our tree and decorated me on the last day of school, so that was lots of fun for car duty, as well as a great holiday concert, and we actually restarted the Whittenburg tradition of sugar cookies. Every student at Whittenburg School made sugar cookies from scratch, that's one of the pictures you see on the bottom, which was, it's just a great opportunity, and it's amazing how many students will say that they have never made homemade cookies. Homemade cookies to them, there's nothing wrong with this, because I've done it, but it's going to the store, getting that roll and slicing them, that's a homemade cookie, but starting from scratch with flour and sugar and salt, and really seeing the difference between those things is, is really interesting. My favorite comment from the cookies was, was a kindergartner who, when she was smelling the vanilla, said, "Smells just like the dentist's office." My dentist loved that comment. Okay, and that is Whittenburg Elementary in a nutshell. I hope y'all will come visit us and check out our Facebook page. We have a lot going on on our Facebook page, just trying to share all the great things that are going on at Whittenburg. So do y'all have any questions about Whittenburg?
It's good to see all the positive things going on, and I think your picture and your comment about Ms. Bell jumping in, that's kind of how, you know, our system's blessed with a lot of people that buy, and they take pride in their jobs, and you know, I think her jumping in, I mean, I've seen it before, we've all seen it. People are willing to pitch in and help out wherever they can, and I think that says a lot for your school, your leadership, and we're glad that they're there for that community. And your Facebook page, I'll say, I follow it, and you have a lot, you've had a lot going on since you hit the ground there, and it's good to see, and I know the community's glad to see that.
I do love some Facebook. So I figure, I heard this comment from Amy Dagel, and I totally agree with it. She said, just a couple of weeks ago, "Somebody's going to tell our story, and I want it to be me," and that's how I have felt, I never put it in those words, but that's how I felt about Virtual Academy and Whittenburg. I want to be the one to tell that story, because there's so much good going on, and it's easy to believe the negative if you don't see the positive.
Yeah, you're doing great, and I will comment, you, your presence has been such an impact since you started. Me and Rob was there before Christmas, and it took us about one minute to see your staff, how much they love you and you love them. It's very obvious you care about your people, so thank you very much.
Well, speaking of my people, the Virtual Academy staff is also very near and dear to my heart. We have been together for three years now and have learned a lot together. You know, we started Virtual Academy not knowing what that really was to look like, how it was to work, and together, they have created a program that is actually very strong. It is also very small. We have a total of 13 students for elementary and nine middle. We had, our elementary starts at fourth grade. We had some interest in lower grades, kindergarten through third grade, didn't have enough to actually warrant another teacher, and also thought that really kindergarten through third grade probably needed to be in the classroom, if at all possible, in person, so that was the best decision, best decision there. This year, we've had three staff members, two teachers, and then I also was teaching two and a half hours a day, and when I took over at Whittenburg, was given that opportunity, the county graciously supplied me with a half-day Virtual Academy teacher so that she could take over that role she started this, in January, actually. We're very grateful for her. They are a great staff, you know, talking about people who will step in and do anything that is asked, that's what these folks do. They do anything and everything for these students and care about each and every one of them. Our schedule looks very different than a regular school schedule. Our students have classrooms or have Zoom sessions where they do their classes Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Yep, left Wednesday out. We did feel like, based on parent comment and teacher comment, that students needed an in-person day for social reasons, as well as to really target intervention needs. So that is our Wednesday, where they come in person from 8:30 to 11:30 at Whittenburg. So that was a really nice tie-in there, to have everybody together. We have really focused this year, or last year, on the academic piece of being a Virtual Academy student. Many of our students, because, because they missed a lot of school with COVID or for various other reasons, really struggled in some areas, not all of our students, but many of them did, so we really worked on growing our students, and we did. You can see our Academic Growth Award for Having Met Growth last year, we're very proud of that. You know, not everybody is going to be your A honor roll AP student in the high school, but we can all grow, and we were able to work with our students and help them grow last year, and we were very proud of that. That does tie into our Wednesdays. When our students come in on Wednesdays, they're in small groups based on need, and even their classrooms a lot of time are based on their academic ability versus their grade level. We have a lot of change with reading, where we might have third, fourth, and fifth grade together if they have the same needs for reading, and we teach them on their level. We do the same thing on Wednesdays, they come in and have an in-person reading lesson, an in-person math lesson, and then we also include science, because I love steam, I love science, so we included that each day to have a hands-on aspect for them. So you can see them building bridges that held all of those books, just with, you know, cardboard and straws, and we exploded some watermelons at the beginning of it, which was very messy and lots of... We try to give our students the same experiences that they would have in person, so they do take field trips, some in-person, some virtual, there's a lot of virtual opportunities actually out there for some great field trips. We have a robotics club that meets every Wednesday in person, and then we also bring in some special guests doing team cuisine, they get to cook every Wednesday when they come in, lots of fun. Virtual Academy is not right for everybody, but it is important for a lot of our students. It's important for students who have medical needs. We've had some students who've joined us because they were going to miss a lot of school due to surgeries or something like that, and we were able to give them the option to attend from home when they couldn't have physically been at school. Some families just prefer their students to learn from home, and that has been a good option for them. We have students with social-emotional needs that would have a difficulty being in large groups of students at once. Sometimes we have students who talk about bullying and being worried about bullying in the school system, and we're able to alleviate that for them, and the funny thing, or the thing that I didn't really think would happen, would be students who have ADHD. You know, you think a student with ADHD is not going to be able to sit and look at the computer to listen to their teacher, but it keeps them from being in the classroom and distracted from everything else. So for the right student with that need, we've actually been able to help there. And again, follow us on Facebook, because we, we do love to promote all the good things that are going on. Anybody have any questions?
Thanks for your leadership with the Virtual Academy also.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Andrea Robinette, our Director of Accountability in Federal Programs, for our mid-year assessment update.
Well, if you looked ahead to my presentation, it won't hurt my feelings if you tell me it's not the most exciting thing you've ever seen. I promise not to be the longest presentation ever either, so maybe it's a fair trade. Tonight, I just wanted to kind of update you on our current DIBELS data. DIBELS stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. Our students in grades K through three take these standardized state assessments, they take them Our students in grades K through three take these standardized state assessments. They take them three times a year. We have BOY, Beginning of Year, M-O-Y, Middle of Year, and then E-O-Y, End of Year. Students, teachers give the assessments to students, and they assess students' own literacy skills such as letter naming, sounds associated with the letters, phonics, phonemic awareness, word reading, decoding, reading comprehension, and how students progress through learning the different levels of literacy and becoming proficient readers. So what you're looking at on this first slide is our Beginning of Year Assessment Data. So this is how our students performed in September when we had Beginning of Year Assessments. All students are grouped either into red, yellow, green, or blue. Red would be well below the benchmark or grade level, and then yellow is just below, green is on grade level, and then blue is above. So if you see here, you're looking at how we as a district compare to the state. That's the percent of students at that grade level who scored in that particular level or on that particular color. And what, you know, stands out obviously is kindergarten. They're in the BOY, sixty-five percent. So when the assessment was given in September, sixty-five percent of our kindergarten students were well below grade level. And while that's striking, I don't know that it's necessarily surprising, because so many kindergarten students come in with different levels. Some students come in almost able to read. Some students come in not even able to recognize letters or know what letters are. So these assessments help kindergarten teachers to determine where students are and what students need in order to progress and make improvements. It's interesting to note, across the state, BOY performance improved from last year to this year. So BOY percentages last year were lower or were higher than this year. So we had more students statewide in the red at BOY last year than we do this year. And Catherine Truitt presented that to the State Board, I think, last week, and part of what she was presenting was, we've got the letters training, the science of reading, and that specifically addresses literacy and early literacy to help students in the instructional initiative. And that's being put in place statewide. So we can assume, or we hope to see, that trend increase and more students coming in on grade level and fewer students coming in in the red. Next slide. So this is our most recent assessment, the Middle of the Year Assessment. This assessment was given in December, and check out that kindergarten group. So we had, if we're looking specifically at that kindergarten group, that was a little bit alarming to us before. Sixty-five percent that were in the red. They have now, you know, improved. We only have thirty-three percent of students that are in the red at the mid-year assessment in that kindergarten group. And we saw improvements across, across the board. But the kindergarten teachers and the kindergarten group specifically worked to improve the sixty-five to thirty-three. Now, you have to keep in mind too, that if a student is scoring at the red level, we could see improvement in that student, but then that student still doesn't make it to grade level. So a student hypothetically would grow to the yellow section and then to the green, and then hopefully even to the blue. But it's, it's a gradual process, and students don't typically jump from red all the way up to green. There's a lot of work and a lot of time put into that in order to help students grow and increase. But overall, what we want to see is our red and yellow numbers go down, and our blue and green numbers go up. We want to see fewer students not on grade level and more students on or above grade level.
Andrea, can I just make a statement here as far as something that concerns me a little bit?
Yes.
I love the improvement from Beginning of Year to Middle of Year with the Kinders. But I'm a little troubled at how much lower we are than state average. And I would ask, are we tracking any of our entering Kinders to see what type of preschool experience they have had and how they are doing on these assessments?
I can't speak to if we are specifically doing that, but I think that that would be very beneficial for us to do, especially because we know that so many of them come in from different backgrounds. And, you know, some having been in Head Start or some in NC pre-K, and then some in private daycare. So I am not, I can't speak to if we are doing that or not, but I think that would be something we should look at.
Is the state doing that, Dr. Hefner?
No, the state's not.
No, you're, okay.
The state's not tracking that at all. But what I'm getting at is that I think that we should in Alexander County, because we are eleven percentage points higher than the state average. And that tells me, or makes me suspect that we have a good number of our little ones not in preschool programs. And we need to start talking to the Partnership for Children and whomever in Atlanta to expand the numbers of Head Start and NC pre-K slots that we are given, because we only are given a certain number. And I think that based on this data, we need to be pushing for more, for more slots in this county so that we can give children. I've always felt like that those preschool programs, they are at an advantage compared to some children coming straight out of the home, because they are exposed to a lot in those programs that prepare them for kindergarten. So I, I want us to delve into that a little bit with this year's Kinders, because I'm concerned about it.
And I'll tell you that elementary school principals met to kind of do a data dive the other day, and we...
I see two of them back there right now, and they're shaking heads.
That came up as part of the conversation. We, we looked at, you know, obviously that was a glaring percentage, and, you know, we just shared generalization and ideas, and, and that was part of the discussion that we were having. What can we do to improve or strengthen what we're able to provide for students or the exposure that students get so that they come to us, fewer students in the red, or, you know, closer to being ready?
Right, yes, absolutely. And I'm troubled by that. That we have that many in kindergarten, that many more than our state av- were that much higher than the state averages in red.
Right, and if you...
And it, it didn't change a whole lot. I mean, there was great improvement, but look, Middle of the Year, we're still nine percentage points.
Right, but if you consider the improvement that we were able to make, what would we be able to do if more students came in better prepared?
Yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely. So I want us to start tracking some of that data.
And what would be the carryover effect of that to the subsequent grade?
Exactly, exactly. So then the final slide just puts BOY and M-O-Y side by side. So that was the, the data from the previous two slides, and then I just put the BOY and M-O-Y together side by side so you could see how those numbers changed. In all, if we total up the students who are on grade level, so our red and yellow percent, or, sorry, I said that backwards, the students who are not on grade level, which would be our red and yellow percent, and then the students who are on grade level, the green and blue percent. We saw a decrease across the board, kindergarten first and second grade, with fewer percent of students in the red and yellow. In kindergarten, it went from seventy-eight to fifty, first grade fifty-five to fifty-one, and in second grade, from forty-six to forty. And that's not specifically on the slide. I'm totaling up the red and the yellow together to get those numbers. There was a slight increase in third grade with the red and yellow, the students who were below grade level. At BOY, we had forty-one percent of students below grade level, and at mid-year, we had forty-six percent that were in the red or the yellow below grade level. And there could be a lot of reasons for that. We could have had more students just kind of hovering there at the, at the yellow mark. But school-level data, what I'm showing you here is just overall summary statistics. But school-level data digs deep down into specific assessments and how individual students perform on those specific assessments. So teachers, instructional coaches, administrators, the school leaders can pull the data together and look at the specific assessments and see, okay, where is the weakness and what do I need to do to help the students in my school or my classroom improve? And a lot of times, they'll take this data, like, we had the, the data dive last week. We had in-class data, but then we also had our ready data. And then they're talking about having a conversation again once we get math benchmark data. So they pull all the data in. You can't just trust one data source. But this one, coming from the state, is one that we rely heavy on in K three. So overall, we're trending in the right direction. What you said about the kindergarten, and it, it is alarming. And what, what can we do before those babies get into our buildings to help and support, I think is, is a big challenge and a big question and, and something we can look at for sure, because that, that seems to be an area that we can make a big improvement on. Are there any questions?
And the Health Department, I have actually contacted Billy Walker. She's pulling some data for me. She's short-staffed, so it's been a little challenging. But she's pulling some data for me so that I get a better feel for how many births we're having to families in Alexander County, and then how many of them are indeed involved in preschool programs and such. And, but she's working on that, and not having a hospital is a little harder to track, how many births we have every year, so.
And I don't necessarily, I speak for her necessarily, but Kathy Neff, I, I believe she is tracking or has started to track the number of our students who do come back to us that transition from Head Start to pre-K into our school system. So that would be helpful information to look at as well.
And I do know that those numbers, it's pretty transient population a lot of times. But I think that with the numbers like this, it would behoove us to start pressing a little bit to get more children involved in those preschool programs.
Yep, to get them better prepared as early as possible.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one. Great presentation. The data's very clear, and I think that the points that you brought up are spot on on the pre-K and the need for pre-training beforehand, right? But I think that also, when we see variance take place, like in grade three, where we're slipping back the slope by three, four percent, that's a big red flag.
Yes.
So the question is, why? Who, and what do we need to do to help those individuals in those facilities to deliver, you know, the countermeasures to bring that slip back under control?
Right, and so that's what the schools will be troubleshooting at the school level to pull in and look at the school-level data and to drill down to the specific assessments and see, okay, which ones...
So when are we gonna see a roll-up from all the schools coming up and adding up to this aggregate view?
When are we gonna see a roll-up? I don't understand what you mean by that.
What's the protocol? When, when do you see that roll-up come up to you? What's driving the variances?
They, they don't actually report that to Andrea. They report that to Dr. Curry. Because Dr. Curry and I, beginning next week, will be having principal Middle of the Year evaluations, where they have to bring in their data and explain to us what is going on, and even specifically with specific classrooms. Now, I do not ask for children's names, you know? I, I follow it at a higher level than that. I follow it at the school level and then down to classroom levels. But beginning next week, they should come in with some protocols in place. They should be able to not only explain their data and let us know if there has been an improvement or decline, and even in which teacher's classrooms, and what's being done with the instructional coach, professional development, whatever the case may be, to get that under control and to make improvements.
Well, I think that this is also, this also ties to policy activities as well as budgetary activities, and that's where we can help. And I think it'd be quite helpful for us to have a view of what is driving these negative variances. So any help that you could help us in understanding that would be appreciated.
If you'll come, if you'll come to the microphone.
Are there microphones on the camera?
It only goes through this, yes.
Good thing I don't have to wear one. If I could just comment on the third grade slip, one of the things that contributes to that is you have to remember, these are the children that missed kindergarten and first grade. They were almost virtual, and so they missed a lot of their phonics instruction and a lot of those foundational skills that they really needed to be successful in comprehension and reading complex text. So we're doing a lot of makeup activities with them and trying to fill those gaps through our intervention system and our multi-tiered system of support. So those things will take time, but what you see here is also a list of K two. When you look at our EOG results and in some past presentations, we close that gap that we experienced, and we start to outperform the state by the time the children are in fifth grade. So I think that that's also really encouraging in that we have teachers who are doing everything they can do, and they did it during the pandemic, just continue to work really, really hard with these children. But when you don't have the itty-bitties in front of you, it's really hard to teach phonics and phonemic awareness and all those things that are foundational to third-grade reading. So it's gonna take some recovery time for that, but I feel pretty confident in our staff and their ability to do that.
But talking about funding, when Dr. Curry and I meet with principals for Middle of the Year reviews, we will ask, you know, does your Title One funding, is it being channeled to the things that it needs to be channeled to? We ask pretty specific questions that they have to come in and explain what they're doing at their schools to, to improve test scores and meet these needs.
And we have a lot of additional staff that's been funded through Essar Fund. And so, I mean, Melinda Glenn commented on that earlier. And you can ask all of the elementary principals, the additional staff that we're getting, that has been phenomenal in the amount of support, because when you have one teacher in a classroom of students, and they might have a TA for two hours, it's really hard to meet those individual needs. Especially when you're, you know, the little ones, you're running to the restroom with them, you're doing everything with them. And so the additional staff has been an absolute blessing, and I just don't know how we'll continue to fund that, but I know that that would probably be their priority based on conversation. But I want to commend Andrea, because I think she did a phenomenal job, as always.
It's very clear, very transparent. Thank you.
Dr. Hefner, if I can just add, I just, not necessarily a question, but just want to share an effort of transparency, you know, talking about the, the Kinders coming in that are behind. I just want to share a personal story. Our son, we are able to take advantage of the NC pre-K program. Our son, for whatever reason, he decided he wanted to wait to speak and to talk. And so my wife and I, you know, with her being a nurse and me being a social worker by trade, we're, we're trying to clinically diagnose, you know, what's, what's going on here. And we reached out and we found out that we could get services through the school system that would help him. That I have seen such a growth in him from the time of starting until now. So if parents are out there and they're not sure of which direction to go, I want to challenge and encourage them to reach out, because there, there's resources that, that are there that, that can help, and that is great. And thank you so much for the presentation. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And I didn't think it was boring at all.
No!
Melinda was talking about exploding watermelons and things like that. Thank you.
At this time, I'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for our superintendent's report.
Board members, you have a copy of my report attached to your agenda. And I just want to start by saying, I was deeply saddened by the passing of my friend and our county manager, Rick Branch. He passed away on Christmas Eve, and Mr. French played a vital role in the progress of Alexander County, and I will greatly miss him. Please continue to remember his wife Cathy. She works at Head Night Elementary School, and their sons Hunter, Parker, and their families. Continue to lift them in prayer. I have provided a mailing address to you for anybody that may want to send a sympathy card to Cathy French. Bullet number two, I know many of you witnessed the cardiac arrest issue with the NFL player, Damar Hamlin, last Monday night. Lots of things have happened in a week's time, and lots of good things happened for that player. But this issue has caused some unrest with some people in, in the community. I have filled in a few questions about protocols that we as a school system have in place. If an issue such as this were to happen within any of our facility- If an issue such as this were to happen within any of our facilities or during a sporting event. And I just wanted to go on record to let you all know the following resources that we do have in place. A number of years ago, we were able to purchase AEDs and we have at least one AED in every facility. And that is an automated external defibrillator. For those of you who don't know much about that, uh, pretty much it walks you through exactly what you are supposed to do when you are trying to get someone's heartbeat going again, as far as even it provides a diagram of where to put the pads on the body. So, um, but we do have a minimum of one in each facility, even in this building. We have a certified trainer that attends every football and wrestling practice and game. And that's of course at the high school level. EMS is often on standby during football games, even for middle school games. And then we also take measures to train staff at every school so that they can administer CPR and other life-saving measures. Having these resources, that does not guarantee a positive outcome like the one witnessed with the NFL player. But there is no doubt that these resources play a role in saving lives. So I just wanted to go on record as sharing that. My third bullet, uh, I'm going to invite our maintenance director, Chris Campbell, to provide an update about the gym floor replacement at Taylorsville Elementary. We ran into a snag last week and I just wanted him to make you aware of that snag. And the project will be taking longer than anticipated and it will be at a higher cost than anticipated. So Chris, if you will share at this time where we are with that project.
Good evening, board members. So there was, as many of y'all know, have probably heard, there's soft, there were soft spots in the cord at Taylorsville. And so the places where we had popped up boards, there was plow with them. Once we got into the tear out, what they had done is they had put the new cord over top of the original cord. So when the roof leaked, I don't remember five years ago, six years ago, the water went through the cord. Had nowhere to go, so it just stood there and the underboards absorbed the water. And so the entire, entire, let me start by giving you an example of how the structure. So the gym floor has a soft asphalt, it's kind of a crushed asphalt bottom. And then it has boards for decking boards. And then that had the original cord over top of that. So everything below the existing cord is rotten and will now have to be replaced. So we have to have someone come in and remove the entire inside. The reason we started this project in January instead of the summer is it's hard to find contractors in the summer. So you get a bigger discount if you start it during the school year. And I worked with Ms. Lingle and Courtney to, to work it out to where we could, to do this, this project. Update could be possibly two to three more weeks from what I heard this afternoon.
Do you have any idea of what the overrun is going to be?
I will, I will say this, the company that we're working on, it will still be lower than the other two quotes we've received for the original project. So it's going to be approximately twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars more.
Than they originally.
And we're using the, we were given the money of the repair and renovation grant money. And we are, we were planning to use some of that for this project. That's why we started it. Any more questions?
But some of you may hear some recreation complaints and concerns. And it is going to take longer because we did not anticipate all that being rotten.
What was the original timeframe you was looking at to replace? Was you intending to do it last week?
They were gonna, we were gonna start it. We planned to start it the first week of January, which they started. And then it was going to be three to four weeks. So now we're looking towards the middle to end of February.
And how's that going to affect Courtney in her classes there?
Can I? But Ms. Lingle will come up.
I should say, we, we probably better defer to the principal since they make that decision.
Yeah.
Um, I worked with Courtney. I thank y'all for letting me speak and also thank you for doing this project. It's something that I've been working towards for, since my tenure there, um, is to replace that floor. But, um, Courtney, I, I talked with her before we ever made any plans. And I said, you know, uh, this is going to displace you. And so can you make arrangements? And she said, yes. And so what we're doing is she is pushing into the classrooms, uh, if, as she can. And she's using some creative PE, uh, resources that she has. And of course, if we have beautiful days, they're going to be outside. And so we've got access to the fields and to the playground. And, and I said, you know, we can do some stuff in the, um, home off the parking lot and create some space for you guys to, to have, um, room to move. And so they, and she's doing some creative stuff, um, with using our hallways and our stairs. And, and so it, it's going to be okay. Okay. Thank you though for asking and for being concerned about that. She was very much, um, willing to be flexible and in order to get, um, an improved facility for our students and the community.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bullet number four, I'm going to pass some folders to each of you. And these are materials that, um, need to be reviewed by the end of the month in order to meet some Head Start requirements. And I would ask each of you have a signature page in your folder. After you have reviewed the materials, we are asking for your signature and to return that to Kathy Nepp. If you have any questions about the Head Start program, um, certainly contact Mrs. Nepp or, or call me. We would be happy to answer any of your questions. But these are, um, materials that were reviewed during the two-day training that I mentioned last month. And it's a requirement that you all be aware of these things, okay? Number five pertains to guidelines to closing a school. I want, uh, you all to be aware that we are going to close the Alexander County Virtual Academy next year. And you heard the very reason why tonight with thirteen children, you cannot continue to pay for that. And we've been very, very lucky. We've used Esser money and different things, but that money will no longer be available to us after June thirtieth of twenty-four.
Okay.
So there are statutes that we must follow to close the virtual academy. And since we are in January, I thought it was as good a time as any to start talking about some of that process. We are not rushed in doing this, but you see that informational meetings must be held. And this is required in General Statute one fifteen C dash seventy-two. It does require a local board of education to hold a, to hold a public hearing prior to closing a school. These hearings are to provide information, answer questions and establish in the minds of those affected that their reactions and opinions are being evaluated. Closing schools is an easier process with public support. These meetings should involve, but should not necessarily be restricted to parents, school-related groups, board of county commissioners and other public officials and local government. It is incumbent upon the board to keep a displaced faculty as well informed as can be. And you heard tonight, that really involves two teachers. And Ms. Glenn has already started having conversations, not only with the teachers, but also the children, and I am assuming probably their parents. Yes. Personnel reassignment plans should be prepared and given to affected individuals as soon as possible. And then the closing decision, after all essential information has been obtained and evaluated by the local board of education and after all essential activities as determined by the board have been carried out, the board should vote in official session regarding closing the school. If the board votes to close the school, the motion should be specific as determination date and it should be accomplished in conjunction with applicable general statutes, which the statute I shared with you right above that. So do you all have any questions about what will need to happen in the coming months? Okay. I'm going to, um, continue to, to talk with you all about when we will do those public hearings. I think the appropriate place to do it will be at Wittenburg Elementary because that's where the virtual academy has been housed. And, um, but we'll, we'll make all of this very transparent and we will go through the, the right process.
Okay.
Bullet number six, a written copy of the arrangement for services for Campbell Shatley Attorneys at Law, effective July one, two thousand twenty-three, is also attached to my report. Please review the, review that document, excuse me, and let me know if you have any questions. Bullet seven is just a friendly reminder that Monday, January sixteenth is a holiday for both students and staff. I encourage everyone to enjoy the long weekend and all buildings will be closed on Monday. Then, um, this is for you all as board members, but also for the public. Please note that the February meeting will be held on Monday, February thirteenth, beginning at six. And this date was changed early in the school year to allow board members to enjoy Valentine's Day with their families. Bullet number nine, I spoke with Chairman Robinson recently about some policy questions pertaining to communication with parents. We have a policy, that policy is number thirteen ten slash four zero zero two. It is entitled parental involvement that I think would suffice for the communication part of such a policy. Again, I would ask for you to review that particular policy and let Chairman Robinson know if this has answered your questions or concerns. We do have a principals' meeting scheduled next week and this policy is going to be reviewed with all administrators to ensure that everybody is doing what we say that we're going to do in our policy. And then the last bullet is bullet number ten. And it's not only a copy. Cause it's a big. And I would ask that all board members come up front again, please. And I would ask that Joe May rejoin them. And I hope you are all very intrigued by this. I have a very big reveal to end my monthly report. At four twenty-five this afternoon, I received a call from State Superintendent Catherine Truitt. And I wanted all of you to know our school system has been chosen to receive five point three million dollars for the project at Sugarloaf Elementary. It appears there were additional capital funds available. And Catherine Truitt called me on Friday and we talked through some things. And she questioned, why did you all not use Esser money for your HVAC projects? And I said, well, truth be told, it's not the easiest money in the whole world to use, first of all. And secondly, we saw a need with children that we needed human capital more than we needed HVAC systems at the time coming out of the pandemic. And we talked and she told me that this was a possibility, that she had all of Alexander County's projects in front of her. And she didn't think any of the HVAC projects would fly, but she felt like the Sugarloaf project would. And she called me at four twenty-five this afternoon. And Joe, I want you tonight to send an email to tell your staff and students that just as soon as humanly possible, I will receive the official letter tomorrow. We are going to work to have a new office, a new gymnasium and a renovated media center at Sugarloaf. And as a superintendent, I started in fourteen. And sometimes I get caught up in the muck. And I don't slow down enough to think about all the great things that have happened since two thousand fourteen. But we can add this one to the list. And it's been a long time coming and I'm just, I, I told Superintendent Truitt, nothing this month will get any better than her phone call at four twenty-five this afternoon. So yay. Yes.
I think it's important, a lot of that, some of the board members previous to several of us on this.
Yes.
And I mean, I fault their, their work and what they left for us to carry on. And they were, well, you know, there's some step away or non-represented here that were.
Absolutely. And I just thank my team for writing the grant. And it just goes to show that you never give up. You don't just, you don't just stop.
Who's involved writing?
Writing the grant, it would have been Chris Campbell, Sharon Mahaffey. Helped me here, there are more involved than that, uh, Pinnacle Architecture helped us some with some of our grant revisions. So, um, but thi- this is a, if you've ever heard of a big deal, this is a big deal. And it's coming with, uh, capital needs monies, so. And Joe's leaving tomorrow to go to DLP, so. I had to hope he's tonight.
Wow.
I take it.
Thank you, Dr. Hefner, for the superintendent's report and especially bullet point number ten. That's, uh, that, that's, that's awesome. I'm happy for, uh, Mr. Mayberry, but most importantly, Sugarloaf community. And I, I hope that the former board members that, you know, like I said, uh, put a lot of work in that. But you know, your, your team, I, I know the grant writing, uh, it's like, it's like you said, if you don't write them, you don't get them.
And, uh. And we do not have a grant writer on staff. But boy, we have some smart people on staff.
Yes.
And we have some hardworking people on staff. And that has made a lot of difference.
Thanks to everybody involved in that process. At this time, I'll recognize Sharon Mahaffey, our Chief Financial Officer for, uh, unfinished business. Item A, proposed board of education policy revision, third reading.
Well, we've had exploding watermelons, we've had five point two million, and now.
How you gonna top that? Challenge raised.
Okay, we have one policy up, uh, back for third reading. I reviewed this with the principals and we're ready to present it to you for your approval. The policy is operation of school nutrition services.
Board members, you have, uh, board policy in front of you, uh, sixty-two twenty. What's the pleasure of the board on third reading?
Move to approve sixty-two twenty, second.
Got a motion by board member Bowman, second by board member Reese. Uh, is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of passing, uh, third reading board policy sixty-two twenty, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy carries, thank you.
Okay, um, the next thing we have, uh, three policies up for, uh, second reading this month. Payroll deductions, uh, policy seventy-six twenty, evaluation of non-licensed employees, seventy-eight fifteen, and depositories eighty-three twenty. Uh, we have reviewed it, these with principals and there's, uh, was only one, uh, very minor revision. So I would ask that, um, we've approved these on second reading.
Board members, we have policy seventy-six twenty, seventy-eight fifteen and eighty-three twenty in front of us for second reading. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion by board member McLean, second by board member Daganhart. Any discussion on these policies? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mahaffey.
Thank you.
Now we've come to new business item A, uh, twenty twenty-three Board of Education Committee assignments. Now we've come to new business item A, 2023 Board of Education Committee assignments. Board members, in your board docs, you do have your committee assignments. You've had a chance, hopefully, to review those. Is there any, any questions about those at this time? I do want to point out, I know mostly y'all here, with the exception of me and Mr. Bowman, are coming on new. We have put at least two board members on every committee this time. You know, some of these committees will meet throughout the days, some will meet more frequently, and that'll give us a chance to hopefully make sure if one more member's unable to attend, hopefully at least a second one could be there, if not both. And we did designate, you'll notice, we designated a chair on some of those committees, because when we do have the committee reports, that way we'll hopefully have one person from the board of the two or three. There are a couple committees that have three due to the extent of them that will have a designated person to speak. It's not that they'll be chair of the committee, but they'll be the chair representing the two or three board members to speak at the committee reports. Are there any questions about any of that? And that's not an item that takes a motion or anything like that. I will say that you have it in front of you, and it will be shifted over to the public content once the meeting is over, if anybody in the public would like to see those committee assignments. All right. That brings us to close session. Per executive, excuse me, per General Statute 143-318.11A6, we'll have to enter into closed session. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
Motion to enter closed session.
Second.
Motion, Board Member McLean, second Board Member Daganhart. All those in favor of moving into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.